Good afternoon. Nope, it's still early.
One minute, please.
I say 11:30 in my.
It does now.
Good afternoon now. It is officially 11:30 and we're going to call this meeting to order. This will take us to item two, the consent agenda. I know that items, I was asked to take pull items B, C, and D for further question discussion. So do I have a motion on item two, A1 and two, A2?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Call, a second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The item passes humanously six-zero. This will take us to item B, approval of notice of grant award for 2024-2025 National Board Candidacy Cohort Continuation Grant from the Texas Education Agency. Trustee Hernandez, I know you had questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Irobali. The reason why I had asked for all these three to be pulled is because I think it's great that we get these awards. We want to take, take advantage of all of the, the opportunities we have to apply for, for seeking more financial opportunities. The one in particular, I understood that the first one was the $50,000 award for the, the National Board.
National Board Candidacy.
Yes, and I just needed some, because of the fact that I read these just barely last night, early this morning. I want you all to know that we're aware of the due dates. I know this is for the award, but the others, I just feel like we need a little bit more time to review these and maybe we can improve our internal process because of the fact that, I appreciate this bringing, this being brought to our attention, but I think we need to give us a chance to read these items. And I wasn't able to open up items, the TEA grant or the, the National Equity Lab grant. And so I had questions on all of them, not so much on the first one, but on number two. What was the, the one for the consultants of one 2.4 million, oh, 1.2 million?
That's, Isabel, we're on item B. I pulled them individually. So if you have questions for the first one, which is the $50,000 grant, if we can ask those, we'll take a motion. And then we'll move to C, and then we'll move to D.
No, I don't have any questions on that one. I just pulled them all out.
Okay.
I just wanted to talk about each one. I mean.
So you're good on that one?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Do you have a motion on item B?
Yes. I moved that the board accept the 2024-2025 National Board Candidacy Cohort Continuation Grant from the Texas Education Agency in the amount of $50,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Quay, a second by Dr. Lovridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition? The item passes six-zero. This will take us to item C, approval of notice of grant of the 2024-2025 Safety and Facilities Enhancement Safe Grant, Cycle Two. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes, so for the, the line item for the consultants of 1.2 million, can you expand on that for us?
Are we on item C or item D?
Item C, sir.
C.
C.
Okay, so, good morning, President Irobali, Superintendent Saya Vedra, Representative Vasquez, on the Education Foundation Fund Development Officer.
So on item number C, this is phase two of the School and Facilities Initiative that we received last year. If you remember, last year we received $34.5 million from TEA. That was cycle one, and that was a need-based grant based on our safety and our facilities assessment. This is the cycle two to that, and so as you can see, the funding amount is significantly lower because that was only based on what the state of Texas still had available. So our application was submitted based on need. The original application amount was 1.3 million. After elaboration, after negotiation, we qualified for an additional $300,000. So trustee Hernandez, what you're asking for is, you're asking us about the budget, the way that it's been set up and submitted to TEA for the application. We don't have to have a technical advisor under this grant. This one doesn't require that. However, working with Mr. Pearson and the facilities team, working with Chief Chavita, and identifying what our school safety needs are and how to utilize these funds, what you're looking at is the budget breakdown on those lines. And so based on our needs, what we did was we built a budget. And so what you're talking about is contracted services. So we're anticipating that we are going to need to spend that much money on contracted services. So that could be installation of cabling and wiring and additional drops that our team can't necessarily handle. So the document that you're referring to is the budget breakdown that we have to submit to TEA. And I know you're familiar with how to historically put budgets, how you put, put grants together. So we can't submit a grant application and ask just for a blanket 1.3 or 1.6 million. We have to give the funding agency some direction on how we intend to utilize the funds. And then that goes back to the safety survey that we provided. So we went and we walked through all of our facilities, identified where our gaps were, identified those needs. And then from that, we combined that with all of the other safety initiatives we have going on. So just for some historical context, remember we have the $150,000 SPAT grant that we just utilized. We also had some of the other fleet and officer investments that we did. So the large $34 million that we got last year is really the nucleus of how we're funding all of our school safety initiatives. This just complements that. So when we worked on that 34.5 last year and we identified all of our needs, it was things, it was things like film, card proxy readers, all of those safety accesses. So as we continue to meet the school district's safety needs, we identified what that next round of infrastructural investments could be. So because we haven't gone to bid on anything and we haven't invested, you'll notice in the budget, there's no mention of who the vendors would be or who the providers would be. We're merely anticipating that that's going to be the required expense to meet those. So that budget breakdown that you're looking at, ma'am, that's just based off of the safety needs assessments that we've been working on with Chief Chavita's team and Mr. Pearson's team.
In particular, this, the 1.2 million that I was speaking of, it said for consultants for architectural firms. So is that for the?
No, that's just, that's the.
The security vestibules or?
I, I believe that's the majority of that, and that's going to be the final expense that we need to meet all of our safety standard requirements. And so when we do that, we'll meet phase one of those safety requirements. And then that'll allow us a little more flexibility on the remainder of our, our funds.
In addition to that, Ms. Edin, on this, some of the new provisions and some of the new codes associated with safety and security are going to require us to understand with our current HVAC systems, how we create a situation for the door to snap shut within the amount of time that's going to be required going forward with safety. And so we need an architect and contracted services to help evaluate, here's what our current HVAC system uses in this school. Here are the pressure rates. And are we going to be able to meet, because the new provisions in the code now say that within a certain number of seconds, when you have a door, it has to snap shut and stay closed. And so right now, the challenge that we're having is that with our HVAC systems, we have to calibrate that. And so we need contracted services to evaluate, you know, that piece. And that's part of some of the costs that's coming from there, as, from an architect for that reason. For the security vestibules is another reason. And so there's significant services that we're going to need that the in-house team is not going to be able to do, right?
Well, thank you for that explanation because when we looked at the applications, and I don't know if it was this one or the next one, I couldn't even open the item. So all it said there, and I just saw A-R-C-H-I. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't expand the field. So I didn't know exactly what that was, but thank you for that explanation. Yes, and so with that, that explanation is what I needed. Thank you.
Well, thank you for asking the questions. That's, that's critical and important as well.
Do I have a motion on item C? I'll move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Irobali, a second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? The item passes unanimously six-zero. This will take us to item D, approval of award dual-language credit university partnerships, RFP number 24-050. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes, sir. The reason why I pulled this one too, from the National Equity Lab for 162,500, I was just curious, I think it's great that you all are applying for this new grant opportunity, but in the scoring part, which I, I think this was the one I couldn't open up, we scored very well on all of the, the, what I think, this is for an award or is this where?
So let me, let me give a little bit of context to this one. And so this is actually a procurement item, not a grant award for this one. And so first of all, let me apologize to the board and thank you all for the short notice. However, we did have some procurement glitches that impacted this particular potential contract going forward, should the board approve. And the, the timing of this will impact whether we're able to offer some of these dual-credit courses in the immediate or whether they'll have to be put off until January. And so this did not make the August board meeting. And so again, we worked, we worked as a, as a team to bring this back to you all in a, in a special called meeting today so that we could consider this, this particular, you know, awarding this, should the board take it into consideration and vote to award that, then we could continue to move forward. We started this process back in May, but there were some roadblocks that we hit along the summer. For whatever reason, we did not meet the August board timeframe. And so I appreciate the board entertaining that this afternoon.
And to be clear, this item is about allowing dual-credit classes during zero and ninth period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so it's another opportunity for our kids, not during the school day, but outside of the school day, to earn extra credits towards college and enhancing that opportunity of college credits.
And the entity is, the cost is associated with providing professors from some of our Ivy League schools, University of Pennsylvania. What are some of the other ones?
They are Cornell, Morehouse, Barnard, Howard, Brown, Wesleyan, and ASU.
Right.
And the cost of $250 per class, per student.
So when we sent it out for procurement, there was scoring on there. And I think we did really well, or however it was scored, I don't. Can you just explain the scoring process? Particularly the one that said we only received seven out of 10 points for the item for reputation? I didn't know what that meant.
So, good morning, President Irobali, board members, Sayvedra, Martha Aguirre, Chief Financial Officer. I would like to introduce Haiti Peña, our Executive Director of Procurement, as she's the one that manages the actual bidding and the evaluation of these bids.
Good morning, Ms. Sayvedra, Board President and Board of Trustees. My name is Haiti Peña. And I'm going to go over the scoring criteria. I know that you had some questions regarding, is it reputation? So what we do is that we actually contact each reference that the vendor goes ahead and marks in their solicitation, and whoever sends back the rating, that is the score that we give them. So we asked for three, a total of three, and we only got two, but they were both very positive.
And just to be clear, this reputation scoring was for the vendor, not for the district, correct?
Yes, it's for the vendor and not for the district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, that's what I needed clarification on because I didn't know what was meant by that. Thank you.
Dr. Lovridge?
Yeah, can you give me a, a number, a breakdown of how many students this could impact? And how many students, at least for this semester?
Absolutely. I can give you that by high school, if you prefer. So Andrews, right now, we don't have any attending, Neil partnerships. Austin, we have 14, Bowie 23, Burgess 18, Shapen 15, Cornell has none. El Paso High has 23, and then with what, with Brown? And actually, El Paso High has seven with Wesleyan. Franklin does not have any. Irvin has 30 with Wesleyan. Jeff has none. And then Young Women's has four with Brown.
Okay, and of those, if there was this delay, how many are affected by that? How many will not be able to take the courses this semester?
All of them.
All of them. None of them are able to do it. So what do they do then in place of those credits?
Well, it's, it's, so they're a zero in a ninth period. So it's an additional class in addition to their already schedule. And so they would just not be in a zero hour or ninth period course.
And so what were the glitches then that caused this to happen? And so what were the glitches then that caused this to happen?
Part of that has to do with the entities that we work with over the summer don't start school till after Labor Day. So from the vendor side of it, that was part of the compounded glitch, if you will.
I'd also like to add, so the actual bid was posted, so we had this bid already and exist, a contract in existence last year. However, we only had four high schools. The intent was to expand to 10 of our high schools. And so with that, we required the policy, CH required that because it was exceeding 25%, we had to rebid. The vendor is not in a co-op, so we had to go through the bid process in order to continue working with them. When we did the posting and the, getting ready to close the bid for evaluation purposes, it was noted that only one vendor had responded, but it was incomplete. So we extended the posting to give them the opportunity to complete the bidding. Then after that process, then the committee has to evaluate and by the time they were evaluating and ready to document all the, the recommendations, the August 16th board meeting had already, it was actually like August 16th when they were ready to recommend, but it was far beyond the deadline for our August board meeting.
Sir, does this affect the total of the bid then, if we're only doing one semester?
The bid will be for the year.
The bid will be, well, if, so if, if we're, if the board does not, should the board not approve this item today, we would have to bring it back at another time and that would mean that we wouldn't be able to start these classes until January, which would impact the cost of the bid. However, we're bringing it to you so that students can start this semester as well as take classes in January or for the, for the entire year.
So when, so just to clarify, 100% of the kids then who have enrolled in these courses will be able to take them this semester?
Yes.
100%?
Yes.
And you've gone college by college to make sure that that's the case because of their enrollment deadlines?
Yes, sir. We've been in communication with Neil and they have, actually, yesterday was the starting day. Today, we've pushed back that for one more day. So as I said, most of those colleges don't start until after Labor Day and with this partnership, they're very collaborative and have pushed back that starting. Agresia, good afternoon, good morning, Ms. Ayvedra, trustees and President Irovali. So yes, to answer your question, everybody will have access, 134 students in the queue.
100%?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, when this was brought to my attention, Dr. Lovridge, which was not until last week, I, the first question I asked is if, if I, if I'm able to call a special board meeting and we're able to get the board to, to come together and approve this, will we be able to start classes this year? Will the universities work with us to? And so that was the first question before assembling all of you.
And no negative effects on the students, still have the opportunity to catch everything up?
Right.
This is a great program, by the way. This is an excellent set of colleges that they're having an opportunity to participate. I know there is a Morehouse connection at, at Austin and I think that's just fantastic. This is exactly the kind of program we want to be doing because this is how education gets people where they need to be in life, realizing their full potential. So I just want to thank you for working on that. I'm just, you know, I was interested in the details, making sure that it's 100%.
And if I may add, so this bid is good for this current year and we can re-encounter it, yeah, for another four years, bringing the contract to the board in the summer annually.
Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes. I, I just wanted to know, Ms. Ayvedra, how can we get more students involved though? Because there's, I heard there's some high schools that didn't have any participants, but yet one high school such as Irvin had 30. Why so much disparity?
I think it's, it's based, I'll let Jason answer that, but some of that has to do with just the interest, you know, from the students and whether they're willing to take an additional course aside from their full course load. We piloted this at the very first year at Irvin and at Bowie. Am I correct? And I would tell you that especially at Irvin, the, the teacher that, she's not the actual teacher of the classroom, but she facilitates the instruction via the, the professor from the college and university, is just on fire about it. So I do believe that there are people that I'm sure encourage kids to go the extra mile, you know, and so we do have work to create a greater awareness, but I do believe that we have some good interest that's coming from many of, of our high schools. I think also GPA calculations sometimes are a drawback. Rather than our kids seeing the value of going the extra mile and having the interaction and something on their transcript from an Ivy League school and working with an Ivy League professor, they're more concerned about their GPA and how this factors into their GPA. And so that, that may cause some to shy away from that because it doesn't, you know, factor in, you know, maybe as much as an AP course, right? So, so those are some of the factors that, that come into play. But Jason, are there any other things that you would add to that?
No. Good morning, Jason Long. I'm the Executive Director for Advanced Academics. I, 100%, that's essentially what happens at a school. So you have to have a couple of different things. You have to have some teacher interest because it is a zero or nine, it's in addition to their teacher load as well. Then you have to have students that are interested, you know, and sometimes drumming up students again for the variety of reasons that Ms. Ayvedra talked about. You get all sorts of different factors. And I think also because it's new, it's still, campuses are adjusting, you know, whenever you have new things that come in, it takes a little bit of time to get acclimated for, you know, that it is an offering, the awareness, the awareness of the catalog of the courses and schools that are offered. It just, it's sometimes it takes that, that time to build that. I do know that when the, after this, well, during the course of the fall courses, we're going to start advertising for the spring because then they can sign up in the spring. So I'm anticipating that some of the campuses that don't have anything going in the fall will probably opt in in the spring. And then once we get it, if the bid is awarded and we get on the four-year cycle, I believe that it'll just continue to grow. So I, I would, I would echo what Ms. Ayvedra said with that.
Well, also, just to add, we'll be making personal phone calls to those that don't have any students enrolled, so.
I would, I would just like for you all to, and Ms. Ayvedra, what you've been doing, I think it's excellent. Just try to spread the word out there to give all of those students the opportunity to be applying and maybe next year we could even apply for more. 162,500, I had said, this is an emergency meeting for 162,500, but I would really like to see other campuses that are just as deserving to get as many kids involved.
And, and again, I think over time, as it gets more established in the district, we can move from zero-nine into the actual work, you know, during the, the regular course, class hours as well, regular schedule. But, you know, it's just, it's incremental. It's incremental introduction and then expansion in the district. We didn't just want to jump in completely and take over a master schedule. So zero-nine first and then we'll slowly work in after that.
I would just like to see maybe when they do get it started in other schools, how well we did in recruiting others and such. If you could, for us, maybe whenever you're ready to disclose all that.
Right. Thank you. We could certainly provide a board update of the final numbers for the fall semester and gearing up to the spring semester in January. Share the numbers for the spring semester as well.
Trustee Cuellar?
Yeah. One quick question. Since we know that there was that, that issue with them starting after Labor Day, right, is this something that can be remedied for the future years when we seek these options for renewal?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that something that's already been addressed with them or?
If I might add, just, so because this bid is, is technically good for the next five years, it'll be, it'll expedite the process of reviewing the contract and bringing it to the board
Okay.
Without that evaluation piece that we have to do this time.
Gotcha. Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Call?
As part of this board update, Ms. Ayvedra, can we get the course offerings too?
Absolutely. We'll share exactly the college, the course, and the professor because some of the professors that teach some of these courses are well-renowned researchers. You know, the, the one that we offered at Bowie and Irvin the first year was on grit and Duckworth, who is the professor who does the, you know, the very established seminal research work on grit, was the professor. And so the kids got exposure to her and the University of Pennsylvania, so it was a pretty awesome experience for them.
Trustee Beals?
Hi. Out of all those high schools that you mentioned, was there only two high schools that weren't?
Three.
Three, okay.
Coronado and.
Coronado, well, actually, no, Andrus has 14, right? Oh, no, Andrus, there's actually four. There's Andrus, Coronado, Franklin, and Jefferson.
Okay. Thank you.
Then my final question is, is there an opportunity for those kids or those campuses to enroll into a program now that we're approving this contract? Is there time to get them up and running so they can participate in these classes? I'm a parent, as you guys know, at a high school. I didn't know this existed. I didn't know that this was even an opportunity. And so is that something that our parents in our communities, especially those four campuses that do not have anyone for them maybe to sign up?
The, the timeline is established by the National Education Equity Lab because they do, they do a lot of the logistics behind the scenes, but what we can do for those campuses is maybe look at doing, offering two in the spring instead of just one. So maybe there's an opportunity to play some catch-up with those court, the, the schools that weren't given the opportunity in the fall. It's just like, we, you work with them in advance so they kind of know which students and all that because then they're working on the backend with the, the other schools, with the colleges.
So Ms. Ayvedra, in that board packet update, I'd actually like to know for those four specific campuses, what communication efforts were done with parents in the community to explain and share those program opportunities to see if it was a lack of interest at those specific campuses or just a failure of communication on that side so that we can remedy it as we look towards next semester? If we're going to do the double offering in the spring semester, we can, I mean, there's no reason to do it, there's zero interest on those campuses for those programs, right?
Right.
But if it was a failure of communication, then we can maybe see what the best course of action is.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Is there any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion on that item?
I move, I move that the board approve the award of the Dual Credit University Partnerships, RFP 24-050 to the National Education Equity Lab Incorporated, doing business as the National Education Equity Lab in the amount of $162,500 with the option to extend the four additional years, one year at a time, subject to review and approval of contract documents by the district's legal counsel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Cuellar. All in favor? Aye. Any in opposition? That item passes six-zero unanimously. This will take us to item number three, adjournment, and I'm going to call this meeting closed at 11:58. Thank you, everyone, for your time.